Okay, City Council is back in session. Roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Here. Here. Okay, and we are, and here's Joe Citro, Councilman Citro.
Here.
Councilman, you said you had to leave it to, and you wanted to quickly make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair and council members, I do have a commitment that I made even before the elections on today's date, so I apologize. But there is a motion that I would like to make, and if I could. Mr. Chair, I'd like to give a little background before I make this motion. I have been approached by three wireless carriers, Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, about constraints they're running into with our permitting department with installing 5G wireless networks. So, no, nothing against our wonderful city staff, and especially our permitting department. I am trying to see if we can expedite some of these things. So hence, my motion is that the council hold a workshop to discuss how we can create best practices to streamline the process of applications with 5G wireless, in suance of the permits that will support the goals of our small cell wireless service providers, that we can better understand the process and allow the providers to voice their concerns and work with us to make this process more efficient to be held, if I may, on August 29th.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Citro, a second, I believe, by Councilman Dingfelder. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
Mr. Chair, I thank you very much for the time. I will stay around until I absolutely have to leave. Thank you, council, for this.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, Councilman Carlson.
We can talk more about this at the workshop, but the danger here is that we're not going to be ready for Super Bowl. We're gonna, we're gonna be embarrassed. Remember when the RNC happened and Chris Christie was sweating? Because you think about all the negative publicity we got on, on the RNC. But we're gonna get international negative publicity because of this, that this is not ready. Because, because, no, if you look at the, if you go back and look at the, the analysis of the media coverage of the RNC convention, almost all of the stories, my firm found that all but two of the stories had at least one negative comment in it. And it, part of it was around the heat and the, you know, the lack of shade and covering and other things. And in this case, when, when, by the time people get here for the Super Bowl, the expectation is that we're gonna have 5G, at least in and around the Super Bowl, and that we have sufficient 4G coverage, and we don't. And, and there's a reason that a particular person did not like the way these antennas looked on the sidewalk. And that's why potentially we're gonna be embarrassed.
Councilman Miranda.
No offense to anyone, but I remember this sometime back about a year, year and a half, two years ago, that this thing came up on council, and after it was all over, I found out that the state exempted themselves, made a special deal, and then passed a law that we, those areas, had to put the poles up for $15 a year rent or something to effect. And it stunk, and I don't trust it, and I don't verify anything they want.
And Councilman Citro?
If I can make one, one more statement, yes, I agree with Councilman Carlson on this. This is gonna be showing off time for the city of Tampa at Super Bowl. However, there's other questions that could be asked at this time, and I hope that the other council members will come up with some really great questions asking for these providers, asking these providers.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, now we move onward to the remainder of our agenda. And Ms. Coyle, I believe that you said you had a commitment that would preclude you from being here more than 20 minutes from now, I guess. So, what items are you here for, ma'am?
Seventy-one and seventy-two.
Okay, any objection with council proceeding to seventy-one and seventy-two first? Okay.
Take your word on the item seventy-one. Chris, some more legal department. Just wanted to speak with you briefly on item number seventy-one. So, the discussion at, on May 2nd was, a group home came in for some residents, and they had to get a waiver from the distance separation requirements. And a conversation came up about what are the distance separation requirements that have to be complied with. The statute here is section 419.001 Florida statutes. This is for, the statute deems them community residential homes. We call them congregate living facilities in our code. They're both the same thing. So, what the statute requires is 1,000 feet between six and fewer, which are considered to be small community residential homes. And it requires 1,200 feet for any that are larger than that. So, seven or more beds would be a large community residential home that would require the 1,200 feet. So, graphically represented. You have your larger ones, have to be 1,200 feet, but you can have two of the small ones within 1,000 feet, and that is for the Florida statutes. Our code pretty closely mirrors this. It's slightly different, because we have individual zoning districts, and we deal with it during, in, in the different areas of the code that we deal with what's allowed in those individual zoning districts. But you can see here from 2743, it's 1,000 feet for the six or fewer residents, same as the statute. So, the six or fewer residents are 1,000 feet. And then in our actual special use criteria, dealing with the seven and more, so again, same as the statute, those larger congregate living facilities or community residential homes require 1,200 feet. So, bottom line, our code really closely mirrors the statute and is consistent with the statute. We are currently, the city is currently in federal litigation regarding these distance separation requirements. So, all things considered, that we are consistent with what the statute provides, we are not recommending any changes to the distance separation requirements at this time, but I am here if you have any questions, concerns, or things to discuss.
Councilman Gutz.
Well, my question is, how many do we allow in a certain radius of a community?
We don't have anything in our code dealing with how many can be in a particular neighborhood. All we have are these distant separations between them, and that, that is mirroring what the statute has.
And the reason I ask is, if I've got a smaller boundary area of a smaller community, and we starting to say we got five, six of these homes, be it some of them are different type of homes, communities sometimes don't like certain things in their communities. Sometimes they embrace them, but when you start putting a real effect on their communities, it becomes an issue. So, is that something with housing, they need to find out, what our housing division to find out how many we need to have? Or workshop on that, because I can see this happening, because a lot of people are money hungry, and they see abandoned duplexes and buildings, and they just put group homes. Let's put disability homes. So, my concern is the mile radius of homes that we're putting in an area.
So, your concern is, and our code speaks to a over-concentration of certain uses in certain areas, and that's where these distance separation comes from. But it sounds like your question is more specific to how many are in a particular area, not necessarily how far they are in between each other. You could have three there, but then what's, what's happening in the larger area?
Right.
That is something that you could ask to be studied, and, you know, it's never a bad thing to, you know, have an idea of what's happening within the city. It is something that could be studied.
Because they're popping up.
Councilman Dingfelder.
So, arguably, Mr. Gutz, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Mora. I mean, arguably, if the state establishes this as a minimum distance separation, arguably, if we did findings of our own during an ordinance process, or whatever, workshop ordinance process, we could enlarge that distance separation, which would have the effect of reducing the number of any types of, these types of facilities within any, within anywhere in the city, arguably. I'm not saying, I advocate that. I'm not saying that that's a good idea. I know there's, there's, you know, there's a lot of other issues involved in terms of ADA, and rights, and civil rights, and potential lawsuits, et cetera, et cetera. And we always have to be very reasonable and careful when we establish those distance separation. But to perhaps answer your question a little bit, that, that is one way to skin that cat.
Councilman Miranda.
I can say that these congregate living facilities and group homes for the elderly, that's mainly what they are in a lot of areas. And for others that are in need, are very much needed. However, no matter if it's 1,200 feet, and we continue, I'm not saying this council, we, meaning elected officials, continue to say, well, it's only 1,150 feet, of course. And you keep changing, 1,200 feet, and you keep giving them 900 feet, 800 feet. And I can name you two of them. One is right next door to one. Right next door, is being built now, it's twice the size of the other one. Makes no difference if it was 200 feet or 2,000 feet. If you're gonna keep giving them the preference of changing that waiver and going back to whatever you want, there no sense making it in any distance, because it doesn't matter. And we've done that, we, meaning elected officials, not this body, many, many times over. So that, I'm just saying, I trust, and when I verify, it doesn't come out. Because the laws are viol, not the laws are violated, the rules are changed to whoever that comes before the podium.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Carlson.
I think, I think your purpose in bringing this up was to answer a question that we had during that one item, so I thank you for following up.
If I could, council, I just, Catherine Coyle, I just wanted to mention, as opposed to doing an actual study of where they are, as they're licensed by the state, there actually is a website. It's a facility finder website that's run by the state, that particular agency. And that's actually how we find whether or not they're in a certain distance. So I can send the link to each of you, and you can go in and look at the geography and see where all the facilities are, their names, their license numbers, contact information, everything. That way, you know where they are, in what areas of the city. So I'll go ahead and send that to you.
Thank you. Okay, next we move to item, oh, yes, sir, thank you, Joe. Next we move to item seventy-two. That was Mr. Maniscalco that maybe left to the restroom. And seventy-three, I guess, I guess we'll go ahead and begin.
Rebecca Hert, legal department, I am here, on item seventy-two, which was a request to appear and address the for-profit clothing and shoe drop donation sites due to several complaints throughout the district. So, this motion was made on May 23rd, so we've had two weeks to look into that. And I can tell you, in, in my initial review of this for two weeks, donation box are, are covered.
Point of order?
Yeah, I know, I know. I'm texting Guido, so.
Yeah, Mr. Maniscalco, this is your item. You might want to come back.
I agree.
And for the record, we did offer to brief everyone individually, so we've talked to everyone who, who was receptive to that.
To pull Guido out of the back.
So, donation sites, because they have some level of charitable speech as determined by the courts, are protected by the First Amendment.
And Rebecca, if we could just wait just thirty seconds for Guido.
That's fine.
Thank you. Jump to another one while?
That as well. Let's, want to do seventy-three? Let's do seventy-three. Anyone here for seventy-three? Or actually, strike that. That's gonna, let's save that one for last. We'll, we'll just wait.
There's no easy one left.
We have sixty-nine, seventy, and sixty-nine and seventy are gonna take a while. And here, okay, okay, we can, Ms. Kurt? And here, okay, okay, we can, Ms. Kurt.
Rebecca Kurt, Legal Department, I am here on item seventy-two, which is a request to appear and address the for-profit clothing and chew-dropped donation sites due to several complaints throughout the district. So again, we've had two weeks to look into this, and I can tell you that in two weeks, we've done some legal research and determined that donation sites in and of themselves, the courts have determined, have First Amendment protection. That doesn't, this was particularly limited to for-profit clothing, so I'm not sure for-profit clothing or donation sites. But however you look at these, probably some of them would fall into a context that are protected even if it wasn't all of them. In light of that, and also in response to the second part of the motion, which was what is currently on our code and in our books, to help regulate this issue, you do currently have some, some code provisions that would apply to these. Now, what those actual complaints were, weren't part of the motion, but I can tell you some of them are kind of intuitive, just understanding the nature of these and looking at the cases and some of the issues that arose in other communities that attempted to address these. And those include the accumulations, people driving up, the boxes being full, so there's accumulations outside of the boxes, in addition to the boxes being placed in locations that are blocking parking or other sites. So currently under our code, they are treated as a portable accessory structure, regardless of whether or not there's any communicative aspect to them, whether there's any speech aspect. So it's completely content neutral. And under that, these structures are not allowed to reduce required parking, reduce required setbacks, or reduce required landscaping. So if they are placed in areas that cause any of those problems, there is already a code violation. In addition, your chapter nineteen of your code prevents accumulations, and so if there are accumulations outside of those boxes, that's also already a code violation. I did speak to code enforcement, and they did tell me that they are enforcing that. And so if there is a complaint, and I, part of the motion was that there were several complaints in the community, that I would suggest that you direct them to code enforcement, who has told me they are prepared to enforce those codes. And if that is not sufficient, and there's further problems, then perhaps we could have additional conversations. But that would be my suggestion of how to proceed on this matter.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman? Maniscalco, then Mr. Goots.
Good enough. So, you know, I know that, as you said, code has some jurisdiction at this point, but if it continues, and it continues out of control, and it just, you know, gets out of hand, then we'll revisit this. But at least, I'm glad to see that we have some basis or foundation, that we have, you know, some way to monitor, control these, balance them out. Thank you.
I'm good, thank you. Councilman Goots.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So code enforcement will deal with the property owner or the actual owner of the box, or both?
It could potentially be both. I mean, typically, when you do code enforcement, through the code enforcement hearing master process, you're going to be, the result of that is a fine, which turns into a lien. So that typically is going to go to the property owner. There are instances where it's potential that we have other code tools in our toolbox that could be used, that could go after the person who was putting it there. So generally, it would be from the property owner's standpoint, who's allowing the box to be there. But if that isn't, if that doesn't fit in the particular facts of the situation, we do have some other tools that we could utilize.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything further from counsel?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, and Ms. Coyle, those were the last two, correct? Thank you. Good luck. Next, we move onward to items sixty-nine and seventy.
Did sixty-nine?
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, didn't we?
Okay, yeah, no, we didn't.
I was thinking of sixty-eight.
Go ahead.
Chuck Weber, Water Department. Item sixty-nine is for the high-service pump station and miscellaneous improvements at the David L. Tippin Water Treatment Facility. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from counsel? Councilman Dingfelter.
Chuck, I think you were sitting or hiding in the back of the room when the other WME discussion was going on about the earlier item sixty-seven, right?
I was here, yes.
Yes, okay. So that's, that was the question I had as related to sixty-nine. Again, the cover sheet, and I appreciate the straightforward nature of the cover sheet, says the contractor reports 11.22 percent cumulative WME, or all the MBE participations added up, and they've attached some kind of forms. I don't know what those DMI forms are, but I assume that probably tells us who, who or what they're going to be using. But again, we are short of the stated city goal of 15 percent. We're short on the front end, going into a significant contract of $4 million. And I just wonder how far we push, how hard we push, and is that you doing the pushing, or Mr. Hart, or both?
Both, sir. Let me clarify a few things. This portion of the project is just design only. The project is a much larger project, and we went through an extensive CCNA procedure to look for a consultant. And in that process, this particular consultant scored very high with equal business opportunity involvement. This, this design phase, there's, I think, seven, if not eight, different, small or equal opportunity business companies that are participating in the design phase alone. And we anticipate that we'll hit the 15 percent mark easily when we hit the construction phase.
Okay. All right. I look forward to it, and make sure you point it out when you do.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anything further? Okay. Anyone wish to move the resolution?
Some move.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelter, a second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor. Any opposed? Okay, we move now to item seventy.
Good afternoon. Brad Baer, Public Works Administrator. Before I get started, I would like to have Chuck Weber hand out a copy of the presentation. The reason I'm doing this is some of the council members that we briefed individually, the presentation has changed quite a bit since then, or I shouldn't say quite a bit, but in some of the smaller areas. The council members that we briefed over the last two days, you won't see much change, but.
Did you ever take a billion dollars, Brad?
No, the number stays the same. If I could have the back room pull up the presentation, please? So going through the agenda quickly, we, I will provide an overview, plus go through a few items that were raised in the individual meetings, then turn it over to Mr. Chuck Weber, who is the Director of the Water Department, who will talk about his two master plans and all the Water Department needs. Then, following Chuck, will be wastewater needs by Eric Weiss, who's the Director of the Wastewater Department. And then Sonia Little, our CFO, of course, will wrap it up with funding scenarios of, you know, how we fund these two massive programs. So to the, the picture to the left is a large force main break in front of one of our master pumping stations on 131st Avenue. And a force main is a wastewater pipeline that is under pressure. And Eric will talk a little more about that in his presentation. The picture to the right is a typical cave-in, where dirt above the pipeline goes into a failed pipeline, because the water table is above that pipeline typically, and it just takes the dirt into the pipeline until you see this on the roadway surface. And this, this location was on Armenia, just north of Kennedy Boulevard. And then water infrastructure failures are on the increase as well. This happens to be a major water main break on Rome Avenue, North Rome Avenue. And in this break, water was shut down for up to a week, and water went into several homes that we had to restore, you know, dry out, and clean up, and then restore. There we go. This slide is, what are the costs of doing nothing? I need to credit Councilman Miranda for asking last time to add this slide. So what are the costs of doing nothing? Nothing. I'm using a wastewater example here, but this applies to the Water Department as well. Reactive costs continue to rise. These are costs to repair cave-ins, force main breaks, nothing to do with the treatment plant. This is just associated with the, in this case, the collection system. So the cost for doing nothing, they include exposure to consent orders, reduction in bond ratings, and a depletion of reserves. And the last point I want to make on this slide is that reactive costs, when you're reacting to an emergency, are at least double, sometimes more, than if you were proactive and you were able to fix the pipeline before it failed. Certainly, this problem is getting worse and is not going away. So we'll get into detailed numbers later in the presentation, but this slide shows our total water and wastewater CIP needs over the next 20 years, which equals 3.2 billion. And that's what's shown in orange. And as you can see, it's front-end loaded, another area that both Chuck and Eric will get into. The blue shows what we have funded with existing revenues, starting in 2016, and can fund using available reserves, while maintaining reserves in accordance with our internal policies. And you can see the last major spike in the blue is in 2019. So we're doing what we can with what we have, but you can see pretty quickly, we run out of money and, and face the possibility of going over, going under those reserve policy amounts that we have set up. To my last slide, the items raised in individual briefings, the first one is, you know, how do water and wastewater capital improvement plans dovetail with the comprehensive plan, and do they, do they include a growth component? So the vast majority of the projects we're proposing for both water and wastewater are rehabilitation and replacement projects that do not need to be included in the comprehensive plan. However, the water, on the water side, water treatment expansion projects and water supply reuse projects will be added to the comprehensive plan if this plan is approved. So the wastewater system, including the treatment plant, I want to point out, was, was built with plenty of capacity, was expanded in the late 1980s, and that's why we do not have a growth component with that department. So the second question is really coordinating with the other programs, like all for transportation with stormwater improvement program. Obviously, it's incumbent upon us to coordinate water and wastewater transportation and stormwater. We don't want to pave a street, or put in a sidewalk, to come back a year later to tear it up, to put in a water line, or do some stormwater work, for instance. So we want to coordinate that, and what we've started doing is, we put together a team of the four engineers, the three directors, using GIS to lay these programs on top of each other, and see where we have some high priorities in, in four or three of the areas that maybe we hit first, and we package these projects by neighborhood. So we, you know, impact the neighborhood one time. The next one is on public outreach. And I just want to stress, absolutely, public outreach will be a key component to implementing these programs. Every design build team, every program manager at risk, or, you know, every part of a program that we put in, will have an extensive public outreach program. And then finally, on a WMBE and SLBE focus, there's obviously been a lot of discussion about that today. This is certainly a must, and something Mayor Castor has stressed. We have an opportunity to ramp that up with these big programs. With, it is paramount to take advantage of that. We will be able to better control goals and the structure of how we do that with a larger program, and it will be much better than being piecemealed on a lot of small design bid-build work, or done by an emergency, obviously. By emergency, you don't have a lot of opportunity for WMBE participation. And with that, oh, did I not, I clicked that already, I will turn it over to Mr. Chuck Weber, take over for the Water Department.
Chuck Weber, Water Department. So as Brad mentioned, we had two master plans, one for the treatment facilities, and one for the distribution system. At the treatment plant, we started by assessing all of the different equipment and structures that we had. There was over 3,000 different pieces of equipment and structures that we assessed. We went and looked at five years' worth of maintenance records, and the purpose was to determine, how much more life do we have with this equipment, with these different treatment processes, and with the structures? The next thing we did was an evaluation. We looked at whether or not our current treatment processes were capable of meeting future regulations, and how well we were meeting our current regulations. We also did some benchmarking. We wanted to answer the question of, how well are we doing with what we have compared to others who have a similar treatment process? And what we found, especially in the areas of chemical use and energy use, that we were top-notch. We're doing the best that we feel it can possibly done with the treatment processes and the equipment we have. The next step was to take all those evaluations, assessments, and benchmarking, and identify a list of projects, and prioritize them, and then develop construction phasing as to far as to how we can manage to construct all that, and what order we wanted to do it. For the, oh, one of the things we found with the evaluation was that we're not quite capable of reliably producing as much water as the plant is rated. The plant's currently rated at 120 million gallons a day, and that's for our max day capacity. And right now, we can only reliably produce about 110 or 115 million gallons a day, and that's due primarily to aging equipment. The plant was put in service in 1925, and we are still running the original pumps, the high-service pumps, the raw water pumps, and the original filters. And that's really a testament to how well the plant has been maintained. But in order to keep maintaining equipment that old, whenever we have to do routine maintenance or emergency maintenance, we have to have parts fabricated, and there aren't any people that make this stuff anymore. So it's become more expensive to maintain this equipment than it is to build a whole new pump station. The other thing that this graph shows is, out in the future, we have a capacity component we need to meet. We have additional demands over the next 15 to 20 years, and by 2032, we need to be able to make 134 million gallons a day. For the distribution system, unlike the treatment plant, all of this stuff is buried. So we can't see it, it's under pressure, so we can't put a camera down there and look at it. So what we did was a risk analysis. We divided up the distribution system into 30,000 odd, some odd 30,000 different segments, and looked at what the pipes were made of, what soil they were in, how old they were, and we used that information to determine what the probability of their failure was. And then we also looked at things like the consequence of the failure. And, you know, those include things like, well, is it in front of a hospital? Is it on Brolene Avenue, or is it out in the middle of nowhere? And when you take the consequences and the probability of failure together, you come up with a risk score. And so for each of those segments of pipe, we rated and organized them by risk to determine when they needed to be replaced and what priority. This slide shows our distribution system. Just some quick facts, we have over 211 square miles, service population of 630,000. One of the other things to notice on this slide is that our service area extends beyond the city boundaries. We do serve part of unincorporated Hillsborough County. We have over 2,300 miles of pipe, almost 50,000 valves, 14,000 head. We have over 2,300 miles of pipe, almost 50,000 valves, 14,000 hydrants, and 98% of that is unseen. Just to kind of put the miles of pipeline in perspective, if you stretched it end-to-end, it would take you from here to California. This slide is an important slide as to maybe answering the question of, why are we seeing an increase in main breaks? And why do we have to ramp up our program? What this slide shows is the miles of pipe that was put in in each decade. And you can see in the 1940s and the 1950s, we really ramped up how much pipe we were putting in the ground. And that's not unusual. If you look along the whole eastern seaboard, this is a familiar story. And the other thing to notice is that, for decades after the 40s and 50s, we were still installing a lot of pipe. The pipe that we were installing back in the 40s and 50s was mainly cast-iron pipe. It has an age of 80 to 100 years, so we are right at the beginning of all this pipe failing. Unlike the pipe that was put in before it, there wasn't that many miles of pipe. So we have to ramp up our program. There's a lot more pipe that's going to need to be replaced sooner. And then the other story that this picture tells is that it's not going to go away for a long time. For each decade after that, we have to replace that pipe when it comes due as well. This slide shows the increase in main breaks that we've had over the last two, or, excuse me, three years. We've doubled the number of main breaks on average. And it also shows, each column there is a month, and it shows how many main breaks we have based on the month of the year. And you can see in Januaries, that's when we have the most main breaks, and it's due to the cold weather combined with the aging infrastructure and the stress that gets on pipe from the cold weather. You can see the last January, we had 220 main breaks, and it's quite a big spike compared to previous Januaries. The other thing to notice is that we're averaging about 100 main breaks before January. And although we have three contractors onboard, when we have a spike in main breaks like that, we're overwhelmed in repairing them, but we're also overwhelmed in restoring the streets and the sidewalks after we repair them, because we cannot find enough contractors to handle that workload. So we're at a point where we have to do something different. It's become very expensive to try to manage a workload like this. This slide shows some of the larger projects that came out of the two master plans. One of the largest and most urgent is the pipeline renewal and replacement. We have to replace over 500 miles of pipeline at a cost of roughly 672 million over the next 20 years. We also need to include a water supply or reuse project to address additional capacity, drought-proofing, sustainability, and minimum flows on the Lower Hillsborough River. I mentioned the high-service pump stations earlier, that's not a small-ticket item. And then also, the disinfection system that we use ozone for, that system needs to have the generators replaced. And then the expansion component for the treatment plant is at 224 million. This slide shows-
And if I may, Councilman Carlson, question?
Just a, can you go back just for a second? Just for, just for my colleagues, since I can't talk to you outside this chamber. Number two here originally said "TAP," and I requested yesterday that they change it. I think the discussion of TAP is a separate discussion that needs to have lots of public input. There are alternatives to TAP, and so they graciously agreed to reframe it in this way. I think the discussion about the overall projects and the budget and the fees related to that are separate than a discussion about a particular project. So anyway, thank you to the staff, but I just wanted to let you all know in case you saw something changed.
Yes, sir. Councilman Dingfelder.
Yeah, I'm glad you raised that. We discussed that briefly when I was being briefed as well. When we get to Sonya's presentation about funding and choices, A, B, and C, I think that's something that we need to discuss in terms of, you know, do we fund something that we haven't necessarily agreed on vis-à-vis the TAP? So we'll get to it when we have that budget part of this discussion, but I think it's an important decision, especially as related to those choices that we're going to be making.
Sure.
Okay. So the last slide that I have for water shows the breakdown for the next five years and then 20 years out, what the total costs are for all the various components of the different master plans. So with that, I'll turn it over to Eric Weiss to talk about wastewater.
Hello, Eric Weiss, Wastewater Department. So the wastewater department has $5 billion worth of infrastructure. So I think it's incumbent upon the city to document how we're going to do future decisions and manage that, and we do that in the form of master plans. We've done two master plans. One for our wastewater treatment plant, the Howard F. Curran Advanced Wastewater Treatment Plant located down at Port Tampa Bay, and then everything else, which is the collection system, the pumps and the pipes that collect wastewater from our homes, businesses, schools, and take it to the plant. So the first one, treatment plant for the Howard F. Curran Advanced Wastewater Treatment Plant. An overall comprehensive master plan hasn't been done since the late 1980s, and that was for a little different reason. That was to increase the capacity of the treatment plant from 60 million gallons a day to 96 million gallons a day. So to do this master plan now, hired an independent engineering consultant. We wanted them to look at two main things. One, you have to look at, what's the condition of this treatment plant now? And I call that the "as-is" condition. So they looked at thousands of records, of our maintenance records, you know, tested and looked at, you know, thickness of concrete walls on tanks, looked at pumps and pipes to get an "as-is" condition. So when they're done with that, they can then do the Phase Two, which is, what do we want to be? They finish that phase, and what do they recommend? So the first thing was no major capacity issues. When I talked about increasing the capacity from 60 million gallons to 96, last year we only saw 57 million. So there's a lot of capacity there. And the reason is, you know, the water per person per day has come way down over the last 30 years because of low-foot toilets and showerheads, you know, efficient dishwashers. So that created this capacity that we don't need to handle in the next 20 years. The other thing is, no real changes to our treatment process. You know, when we first made an advanced wastewater treatment plan, it was cutting-edge at the day. You know, people, engineers came from all over the country to see how we were doing it. And the good thing is, it worked so good and very easy to operate, that some of these other alternative technologies that we looked at, hey, they're doing it in Germany or somewhere else. Our business cases show that it didn't pay for itself. So to change a process, it took 15 to 20-year payback to just change that one process. So it was, it's mostly the same. But the big thing they found is, it's a very old treatment plant. You know, pumps and pipes and tanks get affected by hydrogen sulfide gas at a treatment plant. It's a highly corrosive atmosphere, and it eats away all this infrastructure pretty quickly. So that's what they came up with, and it's shown on this slide, and the important part of this slide that it's front-loaded, almost half of the capital funds we need over the 20-year period are going to happen in the first five years to replace this aging infrastructure at the plant. Okay? So let's talk about the other master plan, our collection system. 60%, this talks about our gravity pipelines, which is 1,500 miles of pipe, 60% of it is over 50 years old, 20% of it's 70 years old. And what's the impact of that? You can see to the right is a number of cave-ins of how much they've gone up over the last seven, eight years. And when you do a repair, that's just a point repair, a diaper, a Band-Aid. You know, most of our pipe was put in by a contractor in the 40s or 50s for a whole neighborhood. So when you had a failure on one street, you pretty much would expect that you're going to see that again somewhere else. And that's not money to actually fix the whole thing, that's just a point repair to fix that one hole. Okay? We're fortunate in the wastewater department that we can actually assess this 1,500 miles of gravity pipe. We have a fleet of seven TV trucks. You may have seen them set up in the middle of the road over a manhole. What they do is they can insert a camera down in the pipeline, which you can see in the middle there, and they can assess the condition of that. Hey, is the pipeline cracked? Is there a root in it? You know, is it offset? And our guys that do this are certified through a national organization, so if you're in New York or California, they're going to grade that pipeline exactly the same. So the results of doing that is on the next page. The very worst pipe is shown in red, and the pipe that's getting there in the very near future is going to be in yellow. Interesting thing about this, unlike the treatment plant, you can see most of the costs are after the first five years, when we fix the red stuff, because that's just us fixing the mainline pipe, which you see down the middle of the street. All the homes and businesses have their own pipe that connects into that. We're not even going to address that until year 11 through 20. The other part of a collection system, wastewater pumping stations. This is a little easy to do. 225 pumping stations throughout our whole service area. We know that they last 20 years. That's how long a pump and the controls last, and a lot of the concrete, because of the hydrogen sulfide gas, gets eaten away. Excuse me. So we could easily just do a schedule of, we know how much it costs, and when's the last time you did it, to prepare a schedule of when we need to rehabilitate each one of those 225 pumping stations. So that's the estimated cost. And the last piece of a collection system in the wastewater department are forced mains. Only 300 miles of these, this is a wastewater pipe under pressure. An interesting thing about this is, there's a lot more risk if there's a failure. If you have a gravity pipe and it caves in or blocks up, we can relatively quickly, or short, or a couple hours, bring out portable pumps and just bypass it one section. You can't do that with a forced main. It's not going to stop coming. And it can take days or maybe weeks, if there's a big forced main break, to get that under control. Some examples, Davis Island Forced Main, it was actually a fiscal '19 project last summer, excuse me, it broke, had a crack in it. So we were able, luckily, to be able to repair that in a little bit less than a day, but we had to move up that work and bid it out, not bid it out and do an emergency affidavit to immediately hire a contractor to get working on it the very next day, which doubles the cost. Yukon and 12th Street, at that area, big wastewater forced main that takes all the wastewater from USF and North Tampa comes right through that spot. We have a preventive maintenance program where we measure the thickness of a metal forced main, and we monitor it over time every five years. And it had been good up until this last year. We measured it, and it was paper-thin. So again, we had to do an emergency contract to go and do that work. Excuse me. Okay? That's the forced main cost. And finally, that's just a recap of all those areas I talked about for over the five-year and cumulative into the 20-year program.
Good afternoon, Council. Sonya Little, Revenue and Finance. You've heard about the master plan as it relates to the construction needs. Over the 20-year period now, how do we fund it? To begin with, if I can just remind you, in our individual briefings, we discussed the modeling that went on from a funding perspective in conjunction with the master plan development. The engineers that were associated with the master plan built out an actual construction draw schedule for us for 20 years. Coupled with that, we engaged an independent rate consultant who specializes in developing rate structures on behalf of local governments for utility systems, and we also ran modeling scenarios internally. There were numerous scenarios that were generated between the city's in-house staff and the independent consultants, and we came up with three that we'd like to just walk you through to give you a sense of the analysis that went into determining the funding strategy. The rate study focused primarily on three major components that comprised of the consumption rate, a base charge, and also miscellaneous fees and charges. As you're aware, the city's current utility bill structure is only a consumption rate structure, so that the customer is billed based on the amount of water, of utilities that are actually used, and it's on a tiered system. So the lowest consumption has a lower rate, and as consumption increases, so does the rate charge for the consumption. Our utility system is one of the last ones in the state of Florida that does not have a base charge. And the reason that it was recommended by our consultant and staff also agrees with is that the base charge protects the system so that no matter how the consumption rate goes up or down, we can always cover the fixed cost. We're always going to have utility costs, we're always going to have chemical costs, and we're always going to have to pay the people who run the system. So we'll have personnel costs as well. So in each of the scenarios that we will present to you, you will see that each one of them will include a base charge. So I'll summarize over the course of the next couple of slides, the scenarios and the assumptions included in one of those, in each of those scenarios, and then we'll talk about what does that mean to the consumer, to the rate payer. To put it in perspective, also, as to why we are recommending that a base charge be considered for the proposed rate structure. In 2009, the city experienced the perfect storm. We were in the throes of the Great Recession, if you will, in 2009, and also, we were experiencing a drought. And as a result of the drought, water restrictions had to be imposed, and as I hear my colleague Brad Barrett say all the time, it worked, because as people stopped using water, our consumption went down 25 million gallons in just one day. And it was, it did what it was designed to do, but what it did to the system is, as a result of those watering restrictions that were brought on by the drought, we lost $25 million in revenues. In addition to losing the $25 in revenues as a result of people following the conservation rules that were set out, we also had to pay Tampa Bay Water to purchase water because of the drought. So that's a fine example of the perfect storm and how a base rate will protect the system no matter what we're going through, whether it's drought, recession, or any other issues that will impact our revenue collections. So that being said, this is a chart that you saw early on when Mr. Barrett was discussing with you, the master plan, I believe it was Slide Six. So we've added a bit of information, but what remains the same is the orange portion. That captures year-over-year, under the 20-year master plan, the cost of the projects that need to be funded. The purple sliver going through the middle of it is our existing debt service, and then the green portion is our operating expenses associated with both the water and wastewater systems. So over the 20-year period, I'm calling this is, this table, our all-in do-nothing scenario, because the line going straight through the middle are the revenues collected by the systems for purposes of covering operations, maintenance, debt service, and also funding the capital plan. As you can clearly see in this all-in do-nothing scenario, in the year 2024, 25, we start to run into trouble, that we will barely be able to cover our O and M, and certainly barely be able to cover our debt service, but more critically, as you heard, we won't be able to meet the needs to repair our crumbling system. So the scenarios that we want to present to you are, there are three. And just to give you a summary, and then I'll give you the backup information associated with each one of those scenarios. Scenario A, we just wanted to see how much we could fund in the way of the master plan if we did a very conservative 3% increase to our existing consumption rate. We would be able to cover 100% of our operations and maintenance, and also what it would shake out to be if we covered 100% funding for a water supply or reuse project. Scenario B, on the other hand, backed into what rates would it take in order to cover 100% of everything? And that includes 100% of the capital plan. And the difference between scenarios B and C is that it excludes construction costs associated with the water supply and reuse projects, and we'll get into with you a little bit farther. I'll ask my colleague, Mr. Weber, to assist with giving you the background information you requested. you requested, Councilman Dean Felder. So the cost of capital, just to recap, you heard from both our water and wastewater directors, in current year dollars for water is $1.5 million. For wastewater, 1.1 for a total of $2.6 billion. But of course, we're talking about a 20-year plan. So if we inflate those costs and add an inflationary factor, we're in essence adding $542 million to those costs. So when we're talking in terms of how do we fund this plan, we're going to be talking about funding a three-point, almost $2 billion master plan over a 20-year period. The assumptions to get us there, under scenario A, just a reminder, all of these scenarios will assume a base charge, the same base charge, which in fiscal year 2020 would be an increase of $4 per month on the, on an equivalent residential unit, ERU, which is for an average household that uses about 300 gallons a day. So this will apply to all of our residential units, one single unit. And thereafter, in the years '21 through '34, an additional $2 per month increase to cover the base charges. And as I mentioned before, we just wanted to have a baseline in this scenario to see what we could fund if we just did a, you know, across-the-board 3% increase in the consumption rate. And what that does is we would be able to cover our operating expenses at 100%. However, under this scenario, we would not be able to fund 100% of the $3.2 billion in our master plan. It would leave about $700 million unfunded in this scenario. So the bottom portion of this, we summarize under the scenario how much would be broken up between cash and debt. So part of the modeling strategy is that we take a very conservative approach when it comes to estimating how much debt we will have to issue because at this point, we have not made any assumptions on any grants that will be received. So over the 20-year funding plan, we will aggressively pursue grant opportunities and what that will do is it will buy down or decrease the amount of debt that we'll issue under any of these scenarios to fund the $3.2 billion capital plan. Scenario B, the same base charge, but in this scenario, we're assuming that we're funding 100% of everything. That's 100% of the capital plan for the 20 years, $3.2 billion. And in this case, instead of the 3% increase in the consumption rate for the life of the program, we would have 3% annual increase in the consumption rate in years '20 and '21 and then 15% annual increase thereafter. And after this, I'll show you what this means to the monthly utility bill by scenario. But in this case, as I mentioned, it funds 100% of everything in the master plan and there again, it gives you the breakdown between cash and debt. Our goal will always be to avoid issuing debt and paying as much as we possibly can with cash and aggressively pursuing grant funding. Finally, scenario C, again, the same base charge, consumption in the first two years, '20 and '21 is the same as in scenario B, however, it drops from 15% to 10% in the years '22 through '25. Again, in this case, it funds everything except it does not provide any funding for water supply and reuse projects. And we'll give you more background information on that. But if I can first just walk you through, under the three scenarios, how does that, I guess, stack us up to our peers? This survey was done by our independent consultant and the line going horizontally across provides the average monthly utility bill for residential units using approximately 6,000 gallons per month. And you see there that the average among our peers for the monthly utility bill is $80.57 compared to the city of Tampa's average of $41.29, our existing rates. But if you take that a little bit farther and compare that to any one of the three scenarios that I just spoke to you about, we still fall far below the average of our peers at about $46.50 per month. So this table is basically a snapshot of where we are today, but if we take that a step farther and we project out with one caveat, the horizontal line going across the top, the blue line going across the top, again, represents the average monthly utility bill of our peers at $80.57 per month. We assume that that stays flat. The likelihood that that would happen is very unlikely. So the lines below it, it captures the average monthly bill year over year because it's our intent to phase in the rate increase to lessen the burden or the blow to our customers. So the lower line, scenario A, which did not fund the entire master plan, it left about $700 million unfunded. You see the difference still, out six years, we're far below. And even at the all-in scenario where we're funding 100% of everything and if we assume that our peers do nothing, the city of Tampa would still be in the next six years far below, but it is a little bit unreasonable to assume that our peers do nothing. But just to put it in perspective of how the services we provide and what we charge to our customers stacks up to our peers. We've talked a little bit and this is a work in progress. We actually do this with our stormwater program where we provide customer assistance. We are going through the process of determining how we reach those who need it most and so we will provide you with additional information on the customer assistance program. And today, we will ask for council's authorization to allow staff to move forward with providing public notice. And I know you have some additional questions, but as you're thinking this through, the intent is today that we will propose the scenario B and Mr. Weber will come back up and provide you with the background information you requested. But along those lines, after we tell you why we're proposing scenario B, which includes the water, the water supply component, we'll ask that we get the authorization that we can notice our utility bill customers starting as soon as next week of the intent to increase rates and also notice that a public meeting will be scheduled in August, August 22nd. So we are primed and ready to issue notice in the utility bills, something that customers will be fully aware of, bright color paper, not just a line item on the bill. And then respectfully request that we receive authorization to move forward for funding this plan with rates becoming effective October 1st. So, Mr. Chair, if I may, turn this back over.
September 5th.
I said September.
And Councilman Dean Felder, I think, had a quick question.
The date will be, if I can correct it, that September 5th. We did not change it on here. It would not reflect August 22nd. The public hearing will request would be September 5th.
Thank you. Councilman.
Sonia, as long as you're there. We've all been briefed on this. Personally, you know, I think we know the need has been there for many years. We've kind of been kicking, kicking the can down the street. It's time that we address it. The economy's doing better. It's going to have some impact on some folks and we'll need to address that. And I think you and I talked about that a little bit in terms of if folks truly have a hardship, the city will have some sort of relief plan in place. But on the bigger picture, in regard to B versus C, and I'm totally in favor of funding everything that has to be funded. And I use, emphasize the word "has to be funded." That's why I'm not really convinced that B is the way to go as opposed to C. But, so I just want to toss this out there. If, for argument's sake, Mr. Barrett, you might want to come join this discussion. If, for argument's sake, the city stopped growing today, okay? Obviously, that's not reality, but for purposes of this discussion, we have capped this city out, put up signs saying, "Do not enter," okay? Then the question is, what do we need to keep this city running water and wastewater for the next X number of years? I would answer that question, or that, as saying C, okay? Option C. But it looks like I'm going to get rebuttal, so that's okay. That's why I throw it out there. I'll just continue that. If my assumption is correct, that we don't need any new, necessarily any new water and/or wastewater treatment capacity without the growth, well, then let me jump over to a different part of the same discussion. We all talk about the fact that new construction should pay for itself somehow or another, okay? And we talk about the use of impact fees to do that. We have many of our constituents who complain to us regularly, including my friend Buster, who told me this last week. Why do I have to be paying for these newcomers who are coming into our city? I think that's a legitimate question. I do believe in the general concept that new construction should pay for itself. So along those lines of those two trains of thought, that's why I'm not that keen on B because I'm not convinced that the existing rate payers should be paying for that new water capacity and any associated, well, I think wastewater said they're not building any additional capacity. So we're just talking about the difference for new water capacity. And why should the existing rate payers be paying for new water capacity? Regardless of what form it takes, Mr. Carlson, across the board, whether or not it's TAP or some other reuse, STAR, what have you. Yes, ma'am? And I guess I'm waiting for the rebuttal that was jumping up.
So I'm going to ask Mr. Weber to come forward and talk more about the capacity and then we'll jump back and forth if you don't mind about the burden on the current versus future right here.
And if I may beforehand, I've probably got to leave in about, just let my colleagues know in about like 10 minutes for...
3 o'clock.
I mean, what's the difference between B and C is how many hundreds of millions?
350 million.
350. So it's not an insignificant discussion.
No, it's not.
And I didn't mean that to you, Mr. Chairman. I just generally to everybody.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I want to address the impact fees first because that is something we are looking at. We do assess some fees for growth right now, the CAC fees. We have two different areas of our city where we charge fees, construction, or cost of native construction, I believe, is the acronym, CAC. But we have engaged the same rate consultants who's looking at...
That's distribution mainly, I think, CAC.
Transmission, yes. But we have engaged a consultant who's looking at distribution, transmission, and plant costs and they're evaluating whether or not, you know, an impact fee makes sense for us. We are probably halfway through that process. So if we come back and look at impact fees and say that, yes, that makes sense for us down the road, that can offset, but impact fees will not offset the magnitude of the issue we have here because growth is a very small component. But we are looking at that and we are moving towards growth pays for growth option.
Why, you said growth is a small component. How can growth be a small component of this additional, this additional water need? That's what we're paying for with $300 billion, isn't it?
Out of $1.6 billion, the growth component of that is roughly like 3%, somewhere in that range. So it's roughly that $350 million or somewhere around there because really, actually, I think we have the slide that shows the, can we pull up the presentation again, please?
Can the presentation be pulled up again? There you go. No.
224 million is really the growth that we're looking for as far as what's happening at the treatment plant. That's really the capacity. Our distribution system and transmission system at this point in time is capable of handling the additional growth.
But I'm focused on the second line. Water supplies/reuse projects, $350 million. I can't help but assume that translates to the additional 50,000 people or 100,000 people that are going to be here at the end of that.
Well, I want to just address the impact fees first, but to address the second bullet, the water supply and the reuse, what option C does not fund is what we're going to do when we get above an annual average day of 82 million gallons a day, nor does it address the issues that we have right now when we have a drought. One of the options for supplying our future water needs is just to buy water from Tampa Bay Water. The problem with option C is it doesn't include the cost of that. There's a pass-through charge that happens every time we have a drought. Normally, no one ever sees it, but it's substantial. It's, and it'll end up being the unitary rate that we all pay as member governments whenever we buy water from Tampa Bay Water. Well, when you couple that with the water quality problems we have when we buy water from Tampa Bay Water, we will need to further treat that water or engage Tampa Bay Water to further treat that water so that it meets the same regulations and we end up with the same water quality that we have in the rest of the system.
Again, it goes back to the same core question. Over these past 15 years that I've been around in this, this or any similar capacity, you know, we're sort of, we're sort of at a certain level. We had some, a bad time back in 2009, but other than that, we stay under that, we stay within that, you know, 80 to 90 million. Generally speaking, it's what I've been aware of, but the thing that will push us up higher than that is the growth, is the growth of the city. So I guess, then my, going back to the core question I'm trying to restate four different times is, if that's the case, and yes, I realize it's a reality, it is a reality, we are going to be above that, but my point is, let's figure out a way for those new folks to be paying for that delta that is going to take us there, up above there.
The second bullet is not meant to address that question. The second bullet's meant to address water quality needs right now when we have to buy water from Tampa Bay Water. The option C does not present the cost from buying water from Tampa Bay Water, which we do right now. Now, we haven't for the last couple of years, but we did the year before that. During that year, we bought 20 million gallons a day for a few weeks and then we bought 40 million gallons a day for a few more weeks, almost a month. That averages to 6 million gallons a day. That water was only tested once.
Councilman Dean Felder, could I just make a suggestion, please?
Yeah.
There's a lot of things that we could all say about this. I mean, for example, at least staff, I know my colleague here is on the board of Tampa Bay Water, but at least staff at Tampa Bay Water disagree with the term poor water quality and there's a whole conversation, the technical conversation that we could get into about that. But there are alternatives to TAP and the growth issues and all that. My suggestion, you do what you think is best. My suggestion is that we send this to public comment and then separately maybe have a discussion, a workshop about how to deal with the 50 MGD reuse and then also how to deal with new supply or new supply needs in the future. We should have a, I think we should have a very robust conversation about TAP versus the alternatives at some future time, but it's a separate conversation, I think, than how to fund it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could respond real quick. My only concern, Bill, is that they're asking us to... My only concern, Bill, is that they're asking us to authorize at least a hint to the community of C, of option C, okay? Not, not a commitment from council, but at least that's your recommendation, is item C, right?
B.
Excuse me, B.
Are we authorizing, or are you going to present all three to the community?
They're recommending B, and they're looking for a vote from us to allow B to proceed. I'm a little concerned. I'm, I'm okay with C, which is a sort of a modified version of B. I'm okay with C, but I'm not thrilled with B, and I, and I agree. We don't have enough time today to get to all the, all of this, and I'm willing to sort of stand down, but I'm not willing to vote for, for B. I'm willing to vote for, for C, just, just to be able to, to put the community on notice, you know, that this is a discussion we'll have, and, and over the next month, maybe we'll, we can get into it deeper.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just, just to, to that point, B versus C. B is the only option that includes funding for all of our needs. C does not. If we do not, if, if we just go with C, we will be coming back in four or five years asking for another change. That's why we're recommending option B.
But, the assumption you just made is that there's no other alternative ratepayer than our ratepayer, okay? Than our ratepayer that's here today. And what I'm saying is, is the new ratepayers might make up the difference between B and C.
Councilman, Councilman Goode's wants.
Well, when I had my discussion, I, I made it clear, when you address councils, you need to come with everything. You need to put it all on the table. And, and now you see what you get. You've got questions, because we didn't put it all on the table in your presentation. I looked at, I, I mean, I thought I wasted my time going, that's some, some things that I told you about acronyms, that people need to know what's what? I'm a firm believer that if I'm going to buy something, I want to go buy a good product. I don't want to go and buy a product, and down the road, I got to be mad about that product, because I didn't get all the nuts and bolts in that product. I'm a firm believer, if I buy something, I want to make sure it's long-lasting. By investing something, I don't want to go back, because the product wasn't good. I hear Mr. Dingfeller saying, but I, I like, I like being myself. I just think that you can't keep coming back to the people, because then they think you're nickeling and diming them. You can't nickel and dime people, because that's the, the, if people say, well, I'm trying to save you, but now you got to come back and ask for more money. You have to put it all on the line when you ask for something, because if you don't, you don't get what you want. I thought, I made, I made that clear when I talked in that meeting. If you want something, you got to put it all on the table, so everyone knows what you're talking about, including the citizens that we serve. You're asking for us to make a vote on something, but the people really need to know, and, and I, I understand, need to ask questions too. But, for me, if I, if I had to go somewhere today, it would be me, because I want it all. I don't want to go back to the people and keep nickeling, diming the people. We know we need what we need, and we haven't got it. I just told you that meeting, I was so upset, if my business had burned a fire, and the adjacent business, because I had a water main right there that ran for almost two months and had no water. A funeral business. The guy next to me has a disability business with wheelchairs, services that people have to have, homes on my street. So, I understand the concern about the needs of our pipes, because as a retired police officer, I know when it gets cold, those pipes bust up, you got clay pipes, you got iron pipes, and they're old, the system's old. We can talk about impact fee later on, to talk about new construction, whatever, but right now, we have to look at the main need right now, and how it's going to get us there. Ms. Little, is this plan B, will it get us there?
Councilman Goode, based on the engineering that was provided for a 20-year period, and all of the needs that have been identified for the water system, the wastewater system, we believe this plan will get us there to accommodate our needs. We knew, and with our earlier discussions, that everyone wanted to see an all-in plan, so that's why staff, along with our external engineering firms, who did all the things that you heard our two directors talk about, they did for a year and a half, almost two years straight, to look at every pipe, every pump, every bolt, to give us an all-inclusive, comprehensive plan related to below ground, above ground, as well as factoring in what our future capacity needs would be. The plan we believe we have before you is an all-in plan. The funding plan that's associated with that, again, is a plan that we believe we can accommodate all of these needs to operate the system, to fund this $3.2 billion master plan over the next 20 years will be, will be sufficient to cover those costs, and we are, have already identified measures to be taken in order to drive down those costs and take advantage of economies of scale, number one, to aggressively pursue grant funding, and also allow us the flexibility so that we're not incurring debt upfront, but over time, in order to give us the greatest flexibility and drive down the costs associated with this massive program. So, yes, sir, to answer your question, the information that has been provided, the analysis that has been done, was done in an effort to provide a comprehensive, all-inclusive plan for all of those categories.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Mr. Water, Mr. Councilman Miranda.
Oh, before, you first. Okay, I'm sorry. You were ahead.
Just to, to Councilmember Dingfeller's point a minute ago, too, I had long discussions with the staff about alternatives to TAP. One of them, i- if you have the $350 million included, you could buy a whole lot of wholesale water from Tampa Bay Water, for example, and even if it needs additional treatment, you could add that in. Another alternative, we talked about STAR, you could buy a whole bunch of STAR program for $350 million. The question is whether any of that makes sense, and we shouldn't debate that now, because we're going to run out of time. But, but my suggestion is we leave the money in, because then we can debate the, what the money should be spent on later. We, we know that we need supply and reuse. The, the other thing, though, is I'm interested to see what the motion is we're going to suggest, because I think all we're doing is suggesting that this go to public involvement, and could we just go to the schedule slide real fast? It's toward the end. My professional background is, is in part public engagement, and my professional recommendation is that you include more public engagement than this. This, when I look at a schedule like this, what this looks to me like is that the public engagement is going to be in this room with city council, and I strongly recommend that you include socializing this and deeply informing the community about it with a, a much more robust schedule. I mean, at the very least, I think there needs to be a public meeting in each district. I think there should be, there, there's no discussion really about how it will impact businesses. There needs to be a discussion with the, the Tampa Chamber and other groups, ideally groups, fan, neighborhood groups. And, and the other thing, by the way, that, that I don't see in here, and I forgot to ask yesterday, is conservation. There are some allegations in the community that we don't conserve as much as we should, and I think you ought to add a slide just on what we're doing, and, you know, what we plan to do in the future to answer those questions. And as you, as you know, as you go along engaging the public, you're going to get asked lots of questions, and you'll modify your presentation as you go. But, I would rather, when, when this comes up today, I think we're just voting to take it to public input, we're not voting to recommend it. And if we're voting for it to go to public input, I hope that it will be robust public input, so that by the time it comes to us, there will be consensus in the community. Thank you.
Yeah, Chair, if I may, address quite a few of those things. First, with Councilman Dingfeller with the item number two and the $350 million, let's say hypothetically, we, we do not implement a potable reuse project, and we, and we do an apples-and-apples comparison of buying water from Tampa Bay Water, you know, expanding STAR and going north with reclaimed water with direct potable reuse and, and other options. The, and we do not select TAP or another potable reuse project. That $350 million, I would venture to say it would be more than that, would be needed to expand the reuse system, to remove the nutrients from the bay. It would be needed to, for water quality improvements, as Councilman Carlson just mentioned, and that is not going to be cheap. It's going to be basically a water softening plant to further treat the water that's coming out of the Morris Bridge well field. So, and those things are all, they're not growth-related. They're, I mean, they are to some degree and will be, but during drought times, we buy water from Tampa Bay Water, and that water needs to be treated further. And, you know, expansion of the reclaimed system, don't forget the wastewater side of, of putting the nutrients in the bay, and providing saltwater intrusion barriers inland. So, there are a lot of environmental benefits that I would argue existing customers should certainly participate in, as well as the new customers that come in. As to the public outreach, we agree. We, we need to hit that hard between now and September 5th, and I apologize for the wrong date up there. And, do a road show, you know, hit, hit social media. We, we just simply need to do that to get the word, word out there as to what we're proposing. I mean, this is something that's unprecedented. It will likely be the largest effort ongoing in this city at $3.2 billion. So, I just wanted to address those two things and turn it back over.
Councilman Miranda.
Thank you very much. I, I agree with all the sentiments that have been said, and I agree with, certainly with Councilmember Goode, I agreed with Councilmember Carlson, I agree with what you just said. And we've never, that I know of, never had a project that was never advertised to the public and let the public know. Certainly now, we have social media that 20 years ago you didn't have, and, and when I look at the, at the project, it ends in 2038, right? How oddly, that's the same number that Tampa Bay Water is supposed to end, as far as the participants involved, but it will not end in 2038. This one will. So, there, there's a lot of differences, and I'm not here to boost Tampa or talk bad about Tampa. But, the facts are that when you don't take what is necessary to fix something, guess what? When you get to the end, you're going to pay again, and you'll pay again. If you buy a six-cylinder car, it doesn't come with a four-cylinder engine, it comes with a six-cylinder engine. So, what we're doing with, we need to fix what we have to the best of our ability, and I applaud the presentation, whether we agree or disagree is another item. But, when you look at what we have to do and how you have to do it, just think if we had the same idea now that happened to the forefathers that were behind us that did the two-share treatment plant, and then they expand the plant, whether considering growth, no, they consider necessity. So, if that plant wasn't expanded to 96 million, where would we be at today? Anybody answer that? What about if the water plant was still at Ulele? How much water would you be buying?
Well, we would be, first of all, on the wastewater side, we would have wastewater overflows.
I understand that.
Yeah.
And you'd have enormous problems. What about if you had the old water plant that was the first one by the Ulele Springs? That was the original water plant. Where would we be at today? You have to go with what you have.
Really bad water quality.
And facts are facts. I understand all that, or some of it I do, I'm not as smart as you guys are, but what it, what it amounts to is that it's a hard decision. Easy decisions don't come easy. Hard decisions are really studied and worked for a long period of time. This is not going to happen in one day. This is going to happen in 20 years from now, the end of it. So, when you look at the chart, on the flow chart of rates, that's what I look at. So, for the last 40 years, no city, in, under these cities, the same scenarios that we have here, has ever been closed to the rate that we charge, none. And now is the time that the can cannot be kicked any further, because if you don't do anything, the cost of just repairing, not forget about replacing, will over cost, if you leave it the way it is, in the next 20 years, you'll have more cost in repairing than you did in replacing. It would go over, in my estimate, over $3 billion in just fixing and welding and, and breaking the same pipe and connecting, and five feet later, they say, hey, you're in the same street doing the same thing. Yeah, we're doing the same thing on the same pipe, just five feet further, repairing the pipe. It has to be done one way or the other. And as far as growth, I understand that, and I, everybody, when they come in, they pay. I don't pay for a new car until I buy one. And I, by the way, I never bought a new car. That's why I got a couple of dollars in the bank. I don't go to football stadiums. Did I pay for one? Could I get a rebate? I don't go anywhere. I don't have, I never had a kid in public school. Do I have to a rebate? I paid for that school because of the need and necessity for society, not for me, but for everybody. So, what I'm looking at is, what do you do and how do you fix it? Why don't we bring a stadium in? You see the people vote for it. We're going to have to vote for this sooner or later, that's what we elected for. I didn't get elected to build a stadium, none of them. In fact, I never have voted for one, never will. Not because I don't like sports, because they're getting your money, and this is what you, we got elected for, for this, not for nothing else. I'm not preaching, I'm just saying the facts. And I appreciate whether I disagree with you at times, and I do quite often, as you well know. It is what it is. And when you talk about STAR and you talk about other things, the cost of putting it in far exceeds the return. We tried it, and I'm not going there, because I know what the figures are, I'm not going to bring them. We tried other things, and the only thing that works is what you, ladies and gentlemen, are presenting. And by the way, I see what you all did. You had the three people make the presentation, and the closer was right there. I saw what you did, and you're very, very intelligent in doing that.
Thank you. And before I recognize Councilman Dingfeller, I unfortunately have to go due to a prior commitment at three o'clock that I'll be late for, but I'm sorry, so pardon me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, just, just real quickly, and, and Brad, did I hear somebody say correctly, we do not have an impact fee, a water impact fee?
We do not.
We do not. Hillsborough County?
I don't, we have a, we have a capacity fee on the wastewater side, which is akin to that.
We have a, we have one.
On the wastewater side, yeah.
Right, but I think Hillsborough County has a, a water and a wastewater impact fee or capacity fee, I think.
I don't know that. I, I just don't know that.
Okay. Well, I'd like us to explore that, because I think it's appropriate. I think that new construction should pay for itself, and I'll give you an example. If, if over the next 10, 15, 20 years, we have 25,000 new residential dwelling units, which I think is completely reasonable, that there might be 25,000 new residential dwelling units over the next X number of years, the, the window that we're looking at, if we had a $1,000 fee associated with that for those new newcomers to help contribute, they're going to be paying their normal water bill, but they're also would be helping to contribute to pay for the additional capacity that we're going to need, one way or the other, that would comes out to $25 million. It's not an insignificant, insignificant contribution from those people who are moving here to, so the people who don't, who already live here don't have to pay that $25 million. All right? It's one, you know, the roads are getting busier, everything's getting busier, the community's growing, some people are for it, some people are against it. I'm not weighing into that, but I'm just saying that newcomers need to be paying their fair share. I'm not looking for any decision or even any further discussion on it today, but I'm just saying, let's explore it, let's discuss it down the road as we continue this discussion, because I think they're intertwined. Chuck, I'll agree with you. When I crunch this number, it's sort of a drop in the bucket compared to $3 billion, but it's still real money, tens of millions of dollars of potential money that's out out there. And in my opinion, our responsibility to the existing residents who are here.
I, I'd just like to reiterate what I said earlier. We do have CAC fees, which are impact fees on the water side, and we have already begun the process of looking at impact fees for transmission, distribution, and plant capacity system wide. So we are working on it as we speak.
Thank you.
But we'll take that back to the administration. Thank you.
John, do you just wanna, sorry, Chairman. Do you just want to ask for them to come back and report to us on that at a certain point?
I'm okay. They know, they know the question's there, and it's intertwined with all of this.
Can I make two other quick comments? One of my questions was, in other utilities, they have a program called universal coverage, and I think it's maybe in a later slide we cut you off, but you, you are looking at programs to, to help people who couldn't afford this.
Yes.
Customer assistance program. There's a slide for it.
I just wanted to make sure that we put that on the record for anybody watching.
Yes, sir.
All right. Anybody else? No?
Nope. Don't forget it's September 5th.
Is there a proposed motion? What are we doing?
Well, per the schedule, today is June 6th, so we have the, we have to authorize to notice the public of a rate increase. Is there a motion needed for that?
Could, could I, could I maybe suggest some phraseology? Could, could we propose, could we make a motion to approve allowing the Public Works, whatever department, to take this idea to the public to get input to bring back to us? We're not, my, the difference here is, we're not today saying we're for against it, we just want the public to give input. In addition to that, what, one thing I'd recommend on the slide that you have showing, you have in number four, consider rate increase. I would suggest that you add in number four, or sorry, the last point, that it, new rates, if approved, would become effective. You know, in public engagement, if you shows a slot, something like that, people think it's a done deal and you're, and you're not gonna listen to them. So I hope that we genuinely listen to the public, we don't just present and educate, but we listen and we bring feedback. And if the motion is that we, that we approve them, taking the public to bring the public's input back, that will give us suggestions that we might be able to use to modify the program or approve it as it is.
Chair, if I might, the, we will certainly do that as a public involvement, public outreach, and what we could do is, is come back on September 5th at the public hearing and, and present what we've found, you know, in that outreach.
Wait, wait, why do you say September 5th? What about August?
Yeah, I, we had to move it out for various reasons, yeah.
All right. So, Mr. Chairman, if you could just hear from Ms. McLean.
And I'm sorry, I was speaking to Marty, so I didn't hear Mr. Carlson's discussion. Was there a motion to set a public hearing for the consideration?
No, I was just suggesting language. As we crafted a motion, I was suggesting language that we say that we, we approved for Public Works to take this idea to the public to get input from the public that they would bring back to us. So we're not, we're not voting for against it today, we're just asking Public Works to get public input to bring back, so that then we can consider later.
So under the statute, we need to notice of, through, using the utility billing process, notice the public of when a public hearing will be set so that they can participate. And I believe what you had heard previously is that the, the folks had indicated that September 5th would be the time that we could set that public hearing.
So in the language of it legally, sorry, in, in the language of it, can we say, can we use what you said here, we're considering a rate increase, we're considering a plan?
Correct.
Can we not, I just don't want to give the impression it's a foregone conclusion, because we, we could come back on September 5th or whatever and say, you know, this is a terrible idea.
Absolutely, yes. Just so that I have a date for the public hearing to be set, that we can notice to.
Mr. Chair, would that require a resolution to set the public hearing?
Is this for, still for September 5th? Always September 5th?
Yeah, I don't believe it would require a resolution to set the public hearing, but it is for September 5th.
And would that require to be noticed in the paper?
You'd have to notice it in the paper, yes.
It's gonna be done through utility bills, Sandy.
But as I, Chairman, sorry, as I said earlier, if that is the, is that, if, if that date is the focal point, we're all gonna be in big trouble. This is one of the biggest things that's ever happened in this city, and it will definitely, I think, be the biggest, now that the airport projects are, it'll be the biggest thing that's happening in the next few years, and maybe even during a recession. We, and, and for some people, this is a big rate increase. We need to make sure that there's a robust conversation and the, the notice of the public meeting, we need to get out there in lots of ways, but I'm hoping that everybody we run into in the community knows all about this and has had all their questions and comments asked and submitted way before we get to September 5th. Please.
Wait, Councilman Miranda, you have.
Well, I, I think that the, and I agree with, I think that. What do you need from us today? If anything? You have authorization to notice the public of a possible rate increase?
Mr. Miranda, if we can get authorization from City Council today, that we can provide notice to all of our utility customers in the customer bill.
For consideration of a rate increase.
For consideration and notice of the public hearing for September 5th.
That's fine.
As long as the words consideration, possible, you know, so it's, nobody gets the impression that it's set in stone of, you know, who's gonna listen to us now, they've already done something.
Right, this, this public hearing is no different than we do for all of our public hearings, where the public has the right to come and provide input related to the recommended proposed rate increase. This is a normal course of business. In some cases, we advertise, in this case, according to Ms. McLean, we're required under Florida statutes to put it in the customer utility bill. We are prepared to do that, and we'll move forward doing that with your authorization.
Okay, Councilman Goode, and then Councilman Dingfelder.
I don't, I don't have an issue with that, but what I do have an issue is that we don't market well here. If you put it out in a utility bill, what other means after that, you're gonna let the public know, because like Mr. Carlson said, this is a big deal, and we don't want to be in a position that people say, well, nobody really know, because I told you in the meeting before, people open that bill up, and the first thing I do, I don't read none of this, I just look at what my bill is. So we have to make sure we market this particular meeting, because it is a hot ticket item. Can you shoot me of that?
Councilman Goode, we heard you loud and clear, and other council members also, about the concern of properly notifying the public. So the first step in the authorization that goes out in the utility bills, it will not be a line item, it will be a separate brightly colored sheet to, to, to communicate the intent and also to, to notify of the public hearing for September 5th. In addition to that, we've already started talking about partnering with our neighborhood liaisons within the city to further get the information out in the neighborhood meetings, in addition to using our social media efforts. So we heard that loud and clear.
Mr. Shelby?
This is a clarification, and certainly Ms. McLean could talk to it, but the authorization to the notice, to, to notice the public of a rate increase, the question is, you have three different scenarios. Do you require council to give you direction today with regard to which of the three scenarios does that have to appear in the notice? Okay, thank you.
That's what it's possible and, and, you know, of a, of a proposed increase or not.
Could I, could I make a suggested motion? Instead of authorization, tell me legally if this is right or not, but if we could say something like, council requests that the Public Works Department run a robust public engagement process between now and September 5th, and then, and properly notice the public about a, that, that there is a consideration of a possible rate increase, and that you return to a, a public hearing on September 5th to present the feedback from the public.
Just to piggyback on that, you know, the administration, everyone here is asking us for billions of dollars. What, what would it take to spend a couple of dollars more to put it in the newspaper, social media, not just in the utility bill, but there are people that, you know, they'll skip right over it, but they're opening up, like I said, they're the Florida Sentinel, the Times, you know?
Councilman, you know, we've been having this conversation for, verbalizing it for quite a, quite a while now. We, we are not, we don't have any problem with doing the advertisements, with doing the community outreach, we've committed to doing that. And we will keep you apprised as to the efforts being made between now and September 5th as far as notifying the public.
All right. Go ahead.
Could, could I say one more thing? Orlando and I, and Citro, who's not here, we're all in the Charter Review Commission. And as an example of our experience, and if we keep mentioning this, we apologize, but in, in that, in those meetings, we had, every meeting was public, but two of them were in particular public meetings, and we unanimously, nine of us unanimously requested that the administration advertise, and they didn't. And then we said, well, it's free to set up a Facebook page for the event, and we unanimously requested that the, that the administration request, put up a Facebook page event, and the feedback from the administration two weeks later was no. And, and so that all led us to lead into Orlando, this is a new day with a new administration. I, watching the new mayor and, and communicating with her, I think it's a completely new era, and I think that she's given a directive to everyone to engage the public and listen to the public, and I think, you know, we're, sorry if we sound like broken records, but I think the change in administration is going to drastically help all of this, and we won't have to harp on it as much going forward. But this is the biggest thing that the city is gonna do for a long time.
I thought stormwater was big years ago. This, this is, you know, it dwarfs it. Councilman Dingfelder.
Yeah, I appreciate Mr. Carlson's background in public relations, and, and I agree with him. I, I think this should be called something like potential rate increase, wherever we're talking about it, as long as that's legally sufficient. Because we're not committed yet, you know, we wouldn't be committed until, until we vote, whenever you're asking us to vote, September, October, whatever, September, I guess. And I think it's important, you know, they, they say, oh, it's just semantics, but I think it's important. The other thing is, Mr. Carlson, I appreciate your suggestion, and I'm actually, at some point, maybe as a, a separate motion, would, would ask, by specific motion, that you guys come back sometime during the summer and let's talk about impact fees and/or related, related issues. So I'll do that as a separate motion afterwards.
All right.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, Councilman Carlson, then you had made the.
I made that motion, do you have it somewhere?
Or you want to restate it?
Do you want to set the public hearing for a time, sir?
It was, it was September 5th, right? For what time?
Do we have an evening, do we have an evening meeting that night?
Let's take a look at this.
Because frankly, frankly, if it's evening, would be more fair, right, Bill?
Yeah, we, it should be, it should be evening, actually, yes.
So for September, we are closed that for Labor Day, of course. On September 5th, it's a regular City Council meeting, we do not have anything that evening.
Rebecca, night meeting also?
I think, I think so. It's three billion, three billion dollars.
You know, and I would say six o'clock to get folks, you know, trying to get up to work at five, five-thirty in traffic and parking. So, would that be part of your motion?
Yes, please, six o'clock.
That we have a night meeting.
Yes. Everybody could.
I'm sorry.
No, no, that's a reg, that's a, that's a, we can call that a regular meeting of the City Council for the purposes of this.
So September 5th, six P.M.
Do you want to?
Here in City Council.
I don't remember what all I said. Do you have, you can read back to me.
Sandy's got it.
Sandy, you want to restate, just so we know what we're voting on, something close?
Okay, you want to first request Public Works Department to put out a notice, a robust, and possible rate increase, and to return to the public hearing on September 5th.
So I'll ju, I'll just say it again, and I'll say it maybe more slowly. I think the words are really important, and sorry, you know, it's, it's like, you know, John's an attorney, you know, it's hard, and it's hard to take that knowledge out of your head, but I want to make sure the words are right. That, that City Council request, that Public Works, the Public Works Department, engage the public with a robust public engagement process between now and September 5th, with the purpose of bringing the public's feedback to us on September 5th, while also noticing the, legally noticing the public of a potential rate increase, and that there will be a public hearing on September 5th at six o'clock.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Carlson.
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Miranda, all in favor of that motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, could I do that additional motion?
Councilman Dingfelder, go ahead.
Very quickly, that all relevant staff return to us in August. Mr. Shelby, if you can help me.
What they do, you have regular meetings on August 1st and August 22nd.
Okay, during staff reports, August 22nd, to update us on the possibility of impact fee or any similar, similar measures to, as related to our utility program.
All right. We have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder, and a second from Councilman Goode, all in favor? All right.
Want to set up one on the, the proposals for new sources and reuse? Do we need to do that before September 5th or not?
It's up to you. My, my issue's slightly different.
Can you all, do we have to know specifically, by September 5th, do we have to know specifically what you're gonna spend the three hundred and fifty million on? Or can we, it, can we just leave it in a general bucket and then just decide the, the actual sources later?
Yes, sir, the three hundred and fifty million can be, be left in a general budget. The way that the modeling has been developed for the, for the six to seven year period is that three fifty will have no impact on the resulting rates, no matter what scenario you go with, with or without that three fifty in the first two years.
So once, what, my suggestion is, once we get past this process, then we start a public engagement process regarding how to use that money, and, yeah, and, and that'll be a whole other discussion.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we have a.
Dingfelder's motion, was it?
We have a vote, oh, so we have a, we have a motion from Dingfelder. Yeah, we did. Dingfelder made the motion, or Goode seconded it?
No, no vote, believe Sandy.
Okay, all in favor of that motion, right?
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We go on to our last item, Mr. Snelling, the skateboard structures.
Yes.
Yep, and that's it.
I'm here, I'm going to provide you some, an update on some of the background information about this particular issue and, and this halfpipe. The, you mean, the answer on, on one, the, the part of motion says what you can do in the short term and, and then in the long term. Kristin and Rebecca are gonna talk about the long-term possibilities for you to consider. My background information is that you all know, he, the gentleman has applied for permits, he started to rebuild it. He has not called in for his first inspection, so there were some issues about whether the drainage is gonna work, or it's not gonna work, and retaining wall, and some of the other items Mr. Hatch had mentioned, both in his letter and the times he stood before you. Until he calls in for that first inspection on his active permit, we won't go out there, and that's by our process and our code, we won't go out there and do the inspection and evaluate whether the drainage works or not. Unfortunately, the retaining wall, ultimately, if it's leaning and it's falling, and if it's, if it's causing the drainage to not do what his plans show, then we will address that. The leaning of the wall onto Mr. Hatch's property is a civil matter, and he understands that, he and I have been talking out in the hall earlier and before, too. The other item, we, we opened, he, he still has an active code enforcement case for the halfpipe. He's also been cited for an additional code enforcement case, because when he was putting his place in review, they discovered that he had expanded his driveway and they, he ran his sidewalk against the city code, so he's been cited for that as well. And then, in, in the course of action of our inspectors out there, we found that he had also built a pergola, an extension, a patio with a roof on it. had also built a pergola, an extension of patio with a roof on it, which also needed a permit. Did that work without permits? He's under citation for that. So that particular citizen is under three different citations for different things. They're all not related, but that's what's going on. And we're working through that process, you know, to code enforcement process, they have to go out and they have to re-inspect, et cetera, et cetera. So the short term is that we are working through all of this various processes, in spite of the, the character of this particular gentleman. We have to follow our due process, otherwise, you know, people end up suing the city. And we try our best to make sure we follow all of those all the time. That's kind of where that is. Yeah, so in the short term, we're doing everything that we can right now to rein this particular issue in. The review, we're not going to pass it until it meets all codes, and also only in setback requirements. At this point, it's, it is a legal allowable kind of accessory structure that, you know, like a batting cage, a basketball court, a swimming pool, tree houses, and play structures. All of those things kind of get lumped into the, a similar kind of thing. So in this case, we're doing everything we can in the short term to try to enforce this thing. And then, and if it's the noise, Mr. Hatch himself said, and he calls the TPD, which is exactly appropriate, and TPD answers and, you know, they make them stop.
So it begins with the skate structure, and then there's no permits for the patio, then there's driveway expansion issues, then there's no respect for the city of Tampa at the end of the day. It's not just, oh, it's a bad neighbor, and the skate ramp makes a ton of noise. On top of that, I mean, the entire house is, is in violation, essentially, I mean, with everything that's done.
We're discovering that a good piece of it is, yes, Councilman. And then, and we're chasing after them. We do that kind of stuff all the time. We are constantly going after people that do work with that.
Where do we legal stand, legal, where do we legal stand with this? Every, he's got all these violations. Where, I mean, where's our road to, to exit here?
It's through our code enforcement process. He's been cited, he's got those three, he's got to come in compliance. When they go back out and they re-inspect in 15 or 30 days, or whatever that timeframe was, I don't know the exact timeframe, he will either pass, or he will fail. If he fails, the next step is you move him to the hearing magistrate. Hearing magistrate hears him, finds him guilty or not guilty. If he finds him guilty, he can go ahead and start leaning the property.
This is deemed recreational, right?
It's, it's, it's a accessory structure, and it's, it happens to be used for recreational purposes. When we look at it, we see it as a accessory structure, and that's the code that we apply to it.
So what is the code for recreation?
I'm sorry?
Is there a code for recreation?
Not in this sense, no, sir.
Because to me, that seems like recreation, this is a skateboarding park inside of a backyard of a residential area. It's going up in the air, and you've got residents, and their privacy has been affected. I mean, you know, I...
People have bowling and shuffleboard courts in their backyard.
Yeah, but it ain't going up 50 feet up in the air, though, you know?
No, they're, well...
And they're not looking over at the next door neighbor waving, haunting them, you know?
I understand that.
So do you need a big motion, Mr. Chair?
Well, before you do anything, Councilman, I'd like you to listen, to talk, to listen what Kristin has to say, because we have had conversations about where, what you can do in the future. And I think Mr. Hatch realizes that, you know, he's kind of stuck in a rock and a hard place with this particular one, but I think he has a larger issue generally with these things going in and around the city. So, yeah, I think Kristin's going to outline some, or ask you what you're thinking of outlining, much in the line of Mr. Gudes, or Councilman Gudes' thinking.
All right.
So, thank you, Jim. I have a 3:30 I have to get to, excuse me. Thank you, Kristin.
Kristin Moore, Legal Department. So recreational structures are allowed in residential districts. In fact, private recreational facilities that are, could potentially have large and loud recreational facilities are allowed in residential districts. That is the policy that's set out in the code currently. City council has the ability to change that through land development regulations. The only caveat I would give you to that is, you know, when you're crafting land development regulations, you have to treat alike, things alike, and, you know, you have to have a police power, you know, public health, public safety, public welfare reason for what you do. So, you know, as you're thinking about these things, and what the particular issue is, you know, if the concern is the noise associated with it, we do have the noise ordinance. There was a bulletin to TPD that they can enforce the noise ordinance against this skate, skating park, so that is an available avenue to try and stop excessive noise from these. If the, but also if the concern is noise, then, you know, you should also think about other potentially noisy structures, so that you're not, you, you wouldn't want to pick just one thing, you would want to look at, you know, these types of, you know, serious noise-causing type of recreational facilities. Likewise, if your concern is privacy, you know, there's structures, accessory structures are allowed to be 15 feet by right under the code, and privacy walls can only be 6 feet. So that might be something that city council want to think about, discuss, can potentially workshop. There's, you know, there's different ways that, that there might be zoning regulations available to address some of these concerns, I would just ask you to be open to, and, you know, perhaps workshop and discuss those if you would like to discuss them further.
Okay. Any members of council, Mr. Dingfelder?
This is really one of those unfortunate things, and I direct my comments to a certain degree to the, to the neighbor who's back in the audience, because I'm not really convinced, other than these code enforcement things, that, that we're going to be able to give you a great solution. And I just like to be straightforward and honest as possible. Just because we're, we're sort of chasing the train. You know, he got, he got this built, he pulled, apparently pulled some sort of temporary slash somewhat permanent permit, and as long as he can figure out a way to be compliant, I don't know that there's much we can do. Now, with that said, that doesn't mean that as, as an individual homeowner, you have an opportunity to file an action in Circuit Court against your neighbor for a nuisance, not just the wall being a nuisance, but the noise being a nuisance. That's just my humble, possible legal opinion, but don't quote me on it. But, but anyway, with that said, I think that it's inherent in this board to initiate an ordinance prohibiting residential skate parks. I, you know, I don't want to try and go into imagining what other types of recreational activities we might want to prohibit. I don't, I can't think of any others. Generally, you know, people aren't building tennis courts and other, you know, problem type things in their backyards, at least not in 50-foot lots. But now we can see a skateboard facility in tight residential RS50s, RS60s, maybe even RS75s or 100s are problematic. And I think that at a minimum, it's not going to help that gentleman, but at a minimum, we should prohibit future development of skateboard facilities. We don't have to draft that, we don't have to figure it out, that's why we have brilliant council and staff to do it. And it's not something that has to be done overnight, but I think in the regular course of business, in the next cycle, ordinance, zoning ordinance cycle, I think we should figure out how to do that. With that said, I will make a motion that we direct staff and legal to draft and bring back a potential ordinance that prohibits skateboard facilities in certain residential neighborhoods.
We got a motion from Councilman Dingfelder, with a quick second from Councilman Miranda, do you have a date for that?
Kristin Moore, if I, if I may...
Tell me what the cycle was.
I think the next cycle cutoff is July 15th, so this would be for the July cycle, 2019.
If that gives you enough time, that's fine with me.
It, it will be, something will be drafted, and then those publicly initiated amendments for the July cycle will be workshopped at some point after July, so it'll, it'll be amongst those.
Okay, thank you. That'll be my motion, that'll be the date.
You got it? All right, we have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder, with a second from Councilman Miranda, all in favor of that motion, indicate by saying aye. All right, any other discussion? No? Yes, sir, that completes the agenda, so we will be going on to new business. Councilman Carlson.
A few quick things. One is that we have a workshop on the 20th about housing, and I'm being asked what the agenda is. Are we going to have people speak, or are we just going to do three-minute stand-up conference? For example, the Tampa Chamber would like to present, do we just ask them to do it?
On the 22nd, you mean?
What, when is it? Is it not the 20th?
20th of June.
Oh.
So we have, we have a workshop on, on affordable housing. Tampa Chamber would like to come speak, for example, do we just let them speak in the three minutes?
Speak under, like a ceremonial activity at the beginning?
I believe the workshop presently has four commendations, and then there's going to be the front porch discussion, and then the rest of the morning will be to discuss affordable housing. I would recommend, because you do have a time certain 1:30 to 3:30, no later than 3:30, land use workshop that's been scheduled, that you do keep in mind that it probably would be in council's best interest to take a lunch break to allow that, your morning session to conclude by noon.
So my question's about agenda, activists are telling me they're going to get 200 people here to speak at three minutes each. So do we want content experts, do we want content experts to come and present, too, or do we just want to give everybody three minutes?
Well, I mean, if you notice here, I haven't brought this up to remove it, but the property appraiser is not going to be able to do the 10-minute presentation on the trim notice, so that'll lighten up that agenda. But, and, to replace, how many people from the chamber would you expect to come?
Well, it's not just them, I mean, there are other organizations that would, that would like to speak. I, my feeling is that we just include everybody in the three-minute part, but if, I, I wanted to ask the question, do you all want an agenda, or do you just want to let anybody speak who wants?
I had made a motion on this particular item, but I was going to amend my motion for specifics on the motion I made. So I'll defer to the chair, how you want to handle that.
I mean, we could, we could have them speak at public comment, or after, you know, each workshop has the opportunity for public comment, correct?
Normally, your rules state that, two things that are pertinent here. Any member of city council may ask questions of any person present during the workshop. That's generally your rule. The second rule is that public comment on the matter, which is the subject of the workshop, is up to a total of 30 minutes at the end of the workshop agenda item, and the way that is structured, three minutes per speaker. The reason you had done that is because the community, when you had structured workshops, is they wanted to hear what staff's position is, or they wanted to hear what the city's position was before they had an opportunity to comment on it. No official action on the matter which is the subject of the workshop shall be taken during or after a workshop unless the public is afforded the opportunity to comment prior to final action. If there is, council, if this is a very lengthy subject, this could then be, and you are constrained by time, you can shorten public comment, you can ask that it not be repetitive, you can call upon those people who you wish to have in the audience, who you wish to have make a presentation. The chair will have the opportunity to preside over the meeting and set time limits as council sees fit.
Yeah, and just because it says 30 minutes allocated for public comment, we don't always stick by that. We can extend, if it's an hour of public comment, or 45 minutes, you know, I've always seen it flexible in the past, so it's not, you know...
Yeah, and, and I know, you all have seen, the mayor is very interested in this subject, and is going to be probably presenting some ideas through her staff, but the question is, are you, are you all okay that whoever, whatever experts we might want to weigh in, we'll just have them line up with the public? We won't have, what, what I don't want to do is if, if Councilmember Gudes has two people he want, and then, and then, you know, the chamber gets left out, or whoever gets left out, we want to make sure...
No, I think everybody would have the opportunity to speak. I don't have, I mean, if we're here all day on the topic, that's fine with me, as long as everybody's heard, I don't have a problem.
And, and the legal department has set aside time that from 1:30 to 3:30 time certain is the land use workshop that they want to be able to present to council, so that's why, you just have to keep that in mind with regard to...
We can cut it off. The, the second thing I had was, we, Councilmember Dingfelder suggested a, a workshop or discussion on CRA management, and to my knowledge, we didn't schedule that. Can we just go ahead and find a date for it?
At the CRA?
Oh, at the CRA meeting, okay.
Yeah, which, our CRA meeting is going to be next Thursday, but then in July, it would be July 25th.
Okay, so we have to make that decision there, okay.
Yeah.
Also, just to throw out on the table, I've gotten more emails and calls about scooters than anything else in the last month. We don't have to make a decision today, but I suggest for a month from now, or two months from now, that we get the four companies to come in and just tell us what they've learned and what they're doing to adapt to, to complaints from the public.
Now, remember, this was before this new council came in, there's a termination clause in the contract, so if it does get out of hand, there is an option.
But what I, what I would prefer is that, before we get to that point, that we are able to give them feedback, so they can modify whatever they're doing.
Sure.
And if you all want to do it sooner, we can. I've, I've talked to a couple of them, and they, they said, you know, it's in their best interest to try to fix these problems, and I think they're aware of the problems, but I just, since we're not allowed to talk in the halls about it, I just wanted to throw it out there.
If I may, start with the scooters?
I thought, when we passed it, that they already had in plan that were the four areas that they weren't going to, that the motor scooter or the scooter would just, won't go in there, just, when it gets to that area, it would stop by itself. I would only, they, they weren't prepared for that. They said they were, but they were.
What apparently is happening is that they, they all have different technologies, but some of them slow down, and some of them just die.
So when it dies on the Riverwalk, they just leave them on the Riverwalk, and so people are mad because there's a pile of them on the Riverwalk.
Well, I'll tell you a story. We, my friend and I came down last Sunday to ride them, and when we approached the Cass Street Bridge, it said, you're, you're approaching, you're going outside the geo fence, and it shut down, so it didn't let you go to, I was going to go to Julian Lane. And, whatever, so we went to Ybor City. His scooter died. The thing is, you don't know how much battery it has until you pay for it and activate it. You know, they charge you the dollar to turn it on. So his scooter died, and he's rolling down Florida Avenue on a sidewalk, pushing down manually. But I have received some emails, too, people complaining, especially on Bay Shore, and then within Ybor City, but Bay Shore's the biggest problem. And then folks that, you know, with wheelchair accessibility are saying they're in the middle of the sidewalks and whatnot, so...
I know we're all giving individual feedback, but to the extent that you all ever think that we should have a public discussion about that, I think the public wants to know that we're doing something, but, you know, you all let us know.
Do you want to wait a little bit, and then, like you said, come back in a few months, and then say, hey, you know?
Seven, eight miles an hour, haven't seen one vehicle seven, eight miles an hour.
It's, it's, do you all want to, you think we should do something sooner or later?
Councilman Dingfelder?
Yeah, it's funny, and my little pile of motions here, motion number three says, let's bring it back June 27th for a staff report, and if we can get vendors, that'd be great. And I'm not trying to kill it, but I just, I saw it coming, I, you know, I'm sure everybody's seen it in other cities, but my wife and I were in Los Angeles last year, and I saw them strewn across the sidewalks, and I said, oh, boy, that's going to come to Tampa. And sure enough, I see them strewn across sidewalks.
You don't forget the pogo sticks.
The pogo sticks, we get to a different issue, but my, that's one of my biggest concerns is, is just, you know, strewn on the sidewalk. And I'm not saying it's the vendor's fault, per se, because the vendor doesn't want them strewn on the sidewalks, but if the, if the users are just going to do it until it stops, and instead of at least politely putting it on the side of the sidewalk, they just strewn it in the middle of the sidewalk, then we got a problem. And it's only going to become a, a bigger problem, so...
So I'll, I'll, if, if that's a motion, I'll second that mo, I won't be here on that day, by the way, but I'll, I'll second that motion. I think we just need to let the public know that we're, that we're paying attention, and that, and that, and we're not against it, we're, I think the vendors are, are trying to correct the problems, but maybe by then they'll tell us the solutions.
All right, so we have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder, would that be Jean Duncan to come back? I think she would handle it at this rate.
Relevant staff.
And invite, and invite, and invite the four vendors, you said.
Yes.
Yeah, and, yeah, open the invitation to Spin, Bird, and whoever, you know, Lime, I think is the third one, but...
Whoever, whoever the vendors are to, to join us, and staff, to join us for a scooter discussion. And, and Charlie, you mentioned about the locations, Borden, the Bay Shore, et cetera, that would be a topic, and also the sidewalk strewn would be a topic, and whatever else.
All right, so we have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder, second from Councilman Carlson, all in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Okay, two more, hopefully, quick things. In the past, council has passed resolutions regarding Cuba, and I think most of you know that I have been a proponent for easing restrictions. The changes that were just made were, could be devastating in lots of ways for our area, and we can go into this later. I would like to propose that I bring back a draft motion, I mean, a draft resolution next week. It would be relatively benign just to say that, that we disagree with... It would be relatively benign just to say that, um, that we disagree with the policy of not allowing American citizens to travel to Cuba. It's not, we, we don't have to weigh into all the politics of it, but to me, the, um, uh, travel internationally is not guaranteed by the Bill of Rights, but to take away the rights of Americans to try to he- help build rights with somebody else just seems to be wrong.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Carlson.
Okay, sure, please, thank you.
Motion from Councilman, uh, Carlson with a second from-
I'll second it, I, I, you were saying, what is it, a resolution, what is it, what do we do?
A resolution.
And you drafting it?
Yes.
For, for, what is that, for signature, or for?
Well, it, it would be, it would be a statement of counsel, and it would, uh, it would be for the, the chair's signature ultimately, if it's the majority rule.
By the way, just so you all know, I, if I could take thirty more seconds, the, the ambassador from Cuba is coming in a couple of weeks. And, uh, the lot, there were, a lot of us, uh, Councilmember Miranda in particular, have spent lots of time, uh, trying to build relationships with the possibility of Cuba opening up. And, uh, when it finally did, back in two thousand fourteen, to some extent, we were caught flat-footed, and everybody else in the US rushed ahead of us. The good news is that this gives us at least a couple of years to, to rebuild, uh, opportunities. And we can have a more robust discussion about it later. But, um, but at the very least, if we could pass a resolution saying that we disagree with the policy of not allowing American citizens to go to Cuba, that's something that we could either send to the Trump administration, and/or we could give to the Cuban ambassador. There have been other similar resolutions in the past.
All right, we have a vote from both.
I'm sorry, before you vote, uh, Councilmember Carlson, I will help you with the formatting of that, uh, uh, resolution. And if, if you can, um, as a courtesy to your colleagues, if you could, um, see that it is distributed prior to that night meeting, so they heavily have the opportunity to-
So that you have to- It's best that you distribute it to us.
Okay, you will also, yes, that, exactly. If, uh, if you provide me the draft, I will format it, and I will see that council has it distributed to them in advance of the Thursday night meeting.
Thank you.
All right, motion from Councilman Carlson with a second from Councilman Dingfelder, all in favor? All right, passed unanimously.
One more thing real fast, can I go to the, please?
I've never used this before.
Only got three minutes.
Please say your name and address for the record. I'm kidding.
So, uh, this is for the, every, the viewers on TV, if they're still watching. Uh, June twelfth, six to eight PM, the mayor is hosting the Mayor's Forum on the Arts. Uh, this is to show her commitment to the arts, her love of the arts, she's an art collector. Um, there will be, uh, three panels, uh, discussion plus public input on the arts. And, uh, um, it's a free event, uh, if, if the public would go to TampaArtsForum.com. There is a link that will get you a, a free ticket, but you have to register on Eventbrite, which is that. So I just wanted to let all the viewers know.
Thank you very much. Anything else, uh, Councilman Carlson?
That's it, thank you.
Councilman Miranda?
Not sure.
All right, Councilman Goode?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, I would like to amend a previous motion I made on May sixteen, twenty nineteen, pertaining to affordable housing. My motion now includes that I would like to have Vanessa McLary, Housing and Community Development Manager, and Monica Meehan, uh, Real Estate Manager, attend this workshop on June the twentieth, twenty nineteen, and be prepared to discuss the plan, uh, the city has for lack of affordable housing, and also as it relates to District Five.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Goode.
Question.
Uh, we have a second from Councilman Miranda, uh, Councilman Dingfelder.
Yeah, so what was the date you were talking about, Bill, same date?
The twel-, June twelve.
No, 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 that's the art thing, that's the affordable housing.
You just said June twentieth.
Yeah, June twentieth.
Oh, June twentieth is the, is the-
The workshop for the affordable housing, yeah.
Your original motion was in, in May.
Right, the original motion.
But it was related to the June twentieth.
Yeah, he's, he's adding to it, yeah.
Affordable housing workshop. And yours, same date?
No, he, I was, I was only, sorry, that was, it was his motion, I think I seconded the original motion a few weeks ago. But I was just asking clarification about the agenda, that was all I was doing.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we're on the same date.
It's the same event.
Same event, okay.
So, uh, we have a motion from Councilman Goode, who seconded it? Councilman Miranda, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, the motion adopted on May sixteen, twenty nineteen, present accommodation to, uh, Mr. James Wright, for a date to be determined, that date is June twentieth, but I see we have a, a packed date, uh, for accommodations? I like still get it on if we can. Okay, all right. All right, we'll put it in. Uh, they'll, they'll be quick, my last, my last one, go ahead.
Do we need a motion for that? All right, we have a motion from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Last one, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to give accommodation to Janelle Hernandez, a West Tampa Elementary School student, who is given the CAFRS Cares Good Character Award in Hillsborough County Schools for caring concern that she shows to others. Janelle takes it upon herself to look after another student with special medical needs every day as she gets off the school bus. I would like to present this combination to Jill, to Janela, on, uh, Thursday, June twentieth, twenty nineteen.
All right, so we have a motion, second from Councilman, uh, Dingfelder, all in favor? All right, anything else?
Yes. Um, I've got two quick ones, um, I, on August twenty-second, at our regular meeting, uh, I'd like an update, uh, from Parks and Rec staff on, and Mr. Maniscalco, you sort of started this. In regard to the Angus Goss pool issue, um, I'd, I'd just like to know, uh, where Parks and Rec is on this in terms of studying it, estimates, cost estimates, possible, you know, budget opportunities for this year, or success.
I mean, it, it could be in the budget, which, the presentation comes in, uh, July, well, either way, either way, so-
Yeah, if it, if it's there, great, it'd be, you know, but, um, at a minimum, if you want it earlier, we could do it earlier.
No, no, that's fine, uh, no, I'm sorry, the mayor's budget presentation's August, uh, first, so, either way. Um, all right, we have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder, we have a second? Second from Councilman Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Oh, and, and also, um, let me, let me add on, while we voted on it, but I meant to include the Lopez pool. Um, because, isn't that, sorry about that. Um, isn't that, isn't that something that we are concerned about as well, the Valdemar Lopez pool?
I brought up both, you know, the one on Spruce and McFarland Park, which is that, and then this one. I know Angus Goss has the, the committee put together, so it's a little bit more, uh, organized and robust. But, um, you know, my discussion, when I asked on my, on my own, was for both.
Well, let's, as long as I got the motion pending and the report coming, why don't I, I'll, I'll amend my motion, just made a minute ago, to include the, is it Valdemar?
Valdemar Lopez.
Valdemar Lopez pool in West Tampa, also to include that in the eight-twenty-two staff report, so that'd be a supplement motion.
Does, do you, you second that?
Say.
All right, we have a second for that, uh, amendment, all in favor? All right, anything else?
Yes, um, so years ago, we passed, um, what we called our, the Green Ordinance. And it had, I don't think it's been touched ever since. Uh, the Green Ordinance addresses sustainability issues, what the city, um, you know, what the city does internally, what sort of potential incentives we offer to the community to be more, quote, green, uh, et cetera. I'd like a report, a staff report, um, on that issue, um, September nineteenth, that gives, that gives them plenty of time. Um, I know this is an issue that the mayor has spoken about, sustainability, there's a lot of cities around the, the state and the nation who have extremely active, uh, you know, programs, sustainability programs, sustainability officers, and that's, you know, we have a sustainability officer, um, who has many, many other hats to wear. You know, I, I think we should have a sustainability officer who only does that, you know, twenty-four, seven, or at least forty hours a week. So, um, with all that said, my motion would be to, uh, have a staff report on the, uh, Green Building Ordinance, on sustainability, to address, um, uh, where we've been since the Green Ordinance was originally enacted, and where we're headed to make our community even more green in the years to come.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder, second from Councilman, uh, Carlson?
Nine nineteen, is that a good day?
Yep, it's wide open.
Okay.
I, um, could I just say, I, I talked to Tom Snelling about this a little bit, um, a couple of days ago, and, um, he said the, the mayor is looking to take the sustainability plan to the next level. And you, maybe you had the same conversation, but, um, do you think that that's sufficient time for them to put it together? I would like to see what the proposal is that they, that she has.
Oh, I don't know, did they, did they give any, I did not have that conversation.
He showed me what the plan has been, and he's updated the numbers, but, but he said she's looked at it, and she's gonna take it way to the next level. And so, we, we can always modify it, leave it on this date, and then modify it if they need more time. But I, I think the point is that we're gonna, we're gonna discuss the issues that you raised.
All right.
Good.
We have a second from Councilman, uh, Carlson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and just real quick, I just wanna say, I know our meetings are going longer than, you know, a couple of months ago, with a different council, but, uh, I feel really good with this new body, because I think we're gonna get a lot done. Because, uh, you know, things have been brought up that need to be brought up, so I'm excited. That's it, can I get a motion to, uh, receive and file? Wait, 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 wait.
We have two motions that Chair Viera wanted to have.
Oh, oh, go ahead.
This Chairman Viera has a motion, uh, he needs a motion for accommodation.
For safe and sound Hillsborough for accommodation to be presented, and a date to be determined. Number one, and number two, uh, well, I'll put on the first one.
All right, we have a second from Councilman Dingfelder, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, go ahead.
Second one is a motion from Mr. Viera to place the Bush Boulevard Workshop on the August twenty-ninth agenda, as many working people are planning to attend.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman-
Right.
We have a second from Councilman Dingfelder?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Knockin' Joe.
Funny guess for not being here.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to receive and file? All right, a motion from Councilman Miranda, a second from Dingfelder, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.